Okay, with that, I'll call the regular meeting of Township Council for Monday, May 27th to order. Of course, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples, and in particular, acknowledge our valued relationships with the Katsi, Kwantlin, Matzwi, and Semiamo First Nations. With that, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Moved by Councillor Bailey, seconded by Councillor Rint. Call the question on A1. That carries unanimously. Get a motion, please, to adopt the regular meeting minutes from May 13th. Moved by Councillor Ferguson, seconded by Councillor Rint. Call the question on B1. That carries unanimously. Motion to adopt the public hearing meeting minutes of May 13th. Moved by Councillor Bailey, seconded by Councillor Pratt. Call the question on B2. That carries unanimously. No delegations or presentations today. Item E1, Reports to Council, Agricultural Land Commission, Application Number 100451. Does anybody wish to move either?
Move number A, referred to the application.
Is there a second or to A? Seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on A? Seeing none, call the question on E1. That carries unanimously. Item E2, Resident Priority Access for Swim Lessons. Councillor Van Popta, do you wish to move that? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move with a minor amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
Just at the last sentence, that council pre-approved funding of approximately $60,000 annually for staff costs from the 2025 budget to implement Option 1. So remove this change and replace with Option 1.
Do you move it as amended? Is there a second or to as amended? Seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on E2 as amended? Seeing none, call the question on E2. That carries unanimously. Item E3, Capital Request Bedford Channel Dredging. Moved by Councillor Van Popta, seconded by Councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on E3? Councillor Ferguson.
Yeah, thank, I just want a quick question either to yourself or staff. I understand historically that we've tried to work with, through the Kwantlin First Nation, also the province. Any response at all from the province as to, you know, what their intentions may and may or may not be? Given the fact, I know the report has to go to them, and we've got some work to do ourselves, but whether there's any inkling from behalf of the province?
Mr. Coonan or Mr. Swag?
Yeah, thank you, through your worship. The application has been submitted through the province's portal. We are working with Kwantlin, who are the official applicant for the application. We have not yet heard back the detailed list of requirements. So this work allows us to advance what can be reasonably expected to be required as part of our dredging applications and permitting requirements.
Yeah, just a supplemental, and this came to my mind right now. I know that over the years, we've worked with Kwantlin, and I guess he may even deport. And of course, the province regarding riffrap and flooding concerns and the like. Would there be any kind of things that the province might be able to chip in, just given that information based on the past?
Thank you, through your worship. Staff were always mindful, keeping an eye on grant programs that are coming up. And I know Kwantlin, the organization, is also looking at strengthening some of their infrastructure. So again, there may be opportunities to collaboration with some of the dredge material, depending on the quality and quantity of material that's going to be dredged, if so permitted by the province.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Martins?
Thank you. Good to see some action forward on this. I was doing a bit of digging on this topic, and, you know, it is at crisis level in the Bedford Channel, but the lack of dredging work in the Fraser, it dates back years. In the Delta Times, it was lamented in a 1903 opinion piece. And while this is moving in the right direction, you know, we also need, I would like to see added on to that, a long-term comprehensive, sustainable dredging program to alleviate this constant silting in secondary channels in the Fraser River. You know, it's not worth chasing down millions every 10 years to get the dredging done, only to see the problem return. And I know that Delta has spoken to this, and I'm hoping that perhaps our intergovernmental affairs people at the township could maybe work in collaboration with some of the other communities that are also affected by this, and really work towards a long-term solution of scheduled maintenance, so that we don't have to keep addressing this problem every number of years. Thank you.
Councillor Richter?
Yes. I just had a question through you to staff, please, Mr. Mayor. Is it our job to pay for any part of the dredging? So in other words, this $150,000 that we're paying at this point, would we have to pay this at some future point? And do we have an idea of how much money the township will have to contribute to dredging? And can this $150,000 be deducted from the total?
Mr. Coonan?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, so the $150,000 is the initial studies required to see the exact work and financial implications to the township. So this $150,000 would, this includes the channel surveys, material testing, preliminary engineering, and I believe some environmental services. There's obviously opportunities that staff will look at, whether, as Mr. Swag had outlined, grant programs or anything else, any pursuits that would see any financial contribution made by different levels of government.
So the $150,000, is it, is the obligation on us, the municipality, to initiate this process and costs?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, in the event, council wants to see the dredging item, then the initiative is from a council standpoint, therefore it would be our obligation to incur those costs.
Okay, and so we wouldn't get any compensation for this $150,000? I understand that, as it's been explained, that we're, we need to start these studies to know what the scope of this is going to be, but we won't see any of that $150,000 come back, is that correct?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, it's difficult for staff to give a definitive answer, because there's still grant programs that may be available that potentially could curtail some of these costs. So there's a high chance we may not be able to recover those, but in the event a grant program presents itself, we could potentially have those covered.
Okay, and so do we have any idea how much additional monies we would have to put in over and above the $150,000?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, once these anticipated studies do conclude, staff will be in a better position to then see the actual costs associated with the dredging. It's premature to give a figure in relation to the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Coost?
Yeah. I just wanted to add to the conversation a little bit about, apparently in Ladner, they have what they call a Ladner Sediment Group, and I'm wondering if, as this is, just continues, like in Delta and other people have mentioned, but it sounds like they were able to sort of secure some, some money to get this done, and I'm wondering if, if we would maybe have more success if we were able to have an advocacy group dedicated to this, this topic, this, and if that is, would be considered maybe in this $150,000, that we could maybe put some of that, because it seems like that's the thing that the government's listened to, is when they're, yeah, not reports, but maybe people that are sort of keep, you know, banging the drum, I guess, as they say.
Councillor Van Popta?
So the challenge with this is that it kind of falls into a no-manland. The province and the jurisdiction lies with the province in terms of dredging, hence us going to the province for permitting, et cetera. It comes down to, at this point, is that we're at a, we're at a critical time where we just can't delay any more, any more red tape, and we just got to get it done. You know, if we don't, if we don't front these costs to at least start the tests and the requirements and the reports now, it'll be another couple of years onto this project. And so I think it's prudent for us to, to do this work regardless, right now, of the funding sources, just get it in the pipeline, get it started, so that when we do get a response from the province, and we do find out the full scale and scope of the project, that we have the information already, the bulk of it already done, so that it speeds up the process. You know, I guess we could wash our hands of this and say, leave it to Kwantlin First Nations to be able to do this, but I don't, I don't, you know, I think that it's, it's in everybody's best interest that we help with this process and to bear some of the costs. It's our residents, and it's, it's, it's our kids that are jumping off that bridge and injuring themselves, and, and it's become a safety issue that I don't want to, you know, I don't think that the discussions of $150,000 in, in, in preparing for something that has to get done is, is too much to ask at this point, and we can figure out the funding sources later after that information comes out.
Councillor Bailey?
Yeah, you know, this subject comes up so often, especially during the summer, that I believe that, you know, this is a good thing going forward, and 150 grand is, is definitely worth it. I'm looking at page two on the report, though, and it says additionally, to maintain water depths in the long term, an ongoing dredging program with associated funding will be required. So is there any, it's probably too early to ask, but is there any idea what this would look like to staff?
Mr. Coonan, Mr. Swag?
Thank you, through your worship. For the dredging initiative to be, to be successful, as indicated in the staff report, regular and ongoing dredging is required. With respect to the financial burden or regulatory burdens and requirements, again, that's still unknown at this point, while we go through the permitting approvals with the province.
Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, call the question on E3. That carries unanimously. Item E4, Capital Request for Water Main Replacement on 28A Avenue. Does anybody wish to move that? Moved by Councillor Bailey, seconded by Councillor Rint. Councillor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship, and just wanted to highlight that the report currently says we own about 73 kilometers' worth of asbestos concrete pipe, and then this 600-meter section is going to cost in total about 1.2 million. So if we extrapolate that over the 73 kilometers, we're looking at about $147 million worth of potential repairs over the next few years that would be required. So I'm just wondering, and that might be an oversimplification of the, of the math, but I'm just wondering what the status of the water replacement reserve is, and if the funding there is pretty consistent, and if we're anticipating having to come up with a plan?
Yeah.
That, I'm sure staff already have, but it'd be great if council was apprised of it as well.
There is no reserve that I'm aware of. There might be some operating funding. There's, council's been presented with this liability in previous budget processes, that it is significant, approaching about $80 million. Mr. Swag, do you want to just give a brief summary of that situation?
Yeah, thank you, through your worship. AC water main replacement is a, it's called a dynamic program. We know the age, we know the relatively condition of the AC water main, but we're also seeing real-life examples of water main breaks. So currently, our program is prioritizing those sections with water main that have had more than the anticipated breaks occurring, and this is one of those sections, but staff are aware of at least a few others, which are becoming an urgent or critical need to replace, and they'll be presented as part of future requests, either part of next year's budget, as part of an upcoming council reports. With respect to total number, the longevity of the AC water main is somewhat unpredictable with respect to, they are nearing the end, but some of them could definitely still last a significant number of years, so they don't all have to be replaced on, in one or two years. So we do have some time to plan for a robust replacement program and associated funding needs.
I believe, Mr. Swag, there's a standing funding request of a million per year for this program?
Historically, that's been the case.
Yeah.
And a million per year, I'm assuming that is enough for sort of smaller sections like this, but nothing overly comprehensive? So if there was, if a desire to have a more comprehensive plan, it would be obviously more than a million dollars a year, is that correct?
Significant capital.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yep. Seeing that, call the question on E4. That carries unanimously. Bylaws for first and second reading, Official Community Plan Amendment, Rezoning Application Number 100278. Development Variants Permit Number 100157, Bylaw Number 59645965, Moved by Councillor Pratt, Seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on F1? Councillor Martins?
Thank you. I'm supportive of this, and I appreciate the proponent working with staff in light of the changes to the provincial rules on this. One, one question that I do have for staff, on page, I guess it's 13 in the report, the actual schematic of the site. At the, the western side of the development on 84th, approaching 206, I see there's a, the property line, and there's an extension there, kind of splitting the street in half. I just want to clarify, though, that's not what's going to happen with the street design, that it will match all the way through, just thinking about the school on the, to the south of this property and all of the, the, particularly the pedestrian traffic of all the, the students coming and going, that there will be a regular street design and a healthy intersection, whatever that may look like, a good crosswalk there, just for all the kids that are coming from this whole entire area, heading to that school. If we can just clarify that that line is nothing to do with design of this.
Mr. Richardson?
Correct, your worship. You didn't notice of the, as Councillor Martins pointed out, the, it follows a lot patterning east and west, this actually provides for completion of the road network north of the middle school there, and you see there's also a pedestrian connection provided for improved protection access in the area as well.
Thank you, and the, the new addition of the road, the 84A Avenue, I'm assuming would actually take some of the burden off of the traffic going along 84th through the school zone? Is that, will that assist with that flow of traffic?
Through your worship, correct.
Yeah, thank you. So that's great, and I think particularly the people that I've spoken with, living in and around this development, will be quite happy. I know they like to see these lots developed and the, the street network finished, so good work, thank you.
That, I'll call the question on F1. That carries unanimously. Bylaws for first, second, and third reeling, Cemetery Bylaw Update 2024, Bylaw Number 6016 6017, I'll move it, seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on G1? Councillor Ferguson?
If I may, through the chair, the question sometimes comes up at different committees, seniors committee mostly, green burials, any comment on green burials, if I may?
Thank you, through your worship, I've got the author of the board, Aaron Rule, Director of Public Works with us. From what I recall, the bylaw provides for it currently, but we don't have a spot right now in our cemeteries. Just confirming with Mr. Rule, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, so supplemental, I know it's been asked for a while, at least five years, how close are you getting to a spot, even a small spot, if I may?
The work is still in progress, we can present a separate update to Mayor Council at a future date.
Okay, that would be great, thank you very much.
Councillor Richter?
Yes, this, I was wondering if we could refer to staff for presentation on the significant changes? In particular, I'm looking at the wording in Section 9.3, although there are probably some other sections as well. Would it be possible for staff to give us a thumbnail sketch of the biggest changes that are coming through as a result of all these little changes?
Mr. Coonan?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, the, most of the changes have been reviewed by the Consumer Protection British Columbia Inspector Officer and External Legal Counsel. The amendments are seeking to ensure compliance with the legislation industry best practice, so it's mostly grammatical errors, housekeeping, and readability. In relation to the exact Section 9.3 that you referred, I believe the rationale was to incentivize for historic right holders to return unused inventory to the township. That allows benefit to those right holders as well, so there is nothing in particular that is substantial that would affect any of the individuals that are the right holders.
Okay, so looking at Section 9.3 in particular, it says replaced, refund, equal to the purchase price less care fund contributions shall be issued, was a refund equal to the greater of the original purchase price less care fund or 40% of the current purchase price, less any required administrative fees. So what is the impact of that?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, for Section 9.3, legal counsel had advised that there was grammatical and housekeeping and readability edits that need to be made, so that's the rationale for changing that. The exact impact of it, Mr. Rule could potentially talk about, but it is mostly grammatical and housekeeping.
Okay, so the original purchase price, someone may have purchased it, I don't know, 10, 20, 30 years ago, for market value at that point, or whatever fair price was at that point, but the current purchase price being 40% of the current, why was 40% of the current purchase price selected?
So for Section 9.3, we made the change, because if you bought a plot, say, 20, 30 years ago, and I'll just make up a number, $200 you paid for it, today, maybe it's worth a couple thousand. So what we're finding is that right holders aren't wanting to sell that plot for the, say, $200, because it's not really incentive for them, so they hang on to it. So we're looking to increase what they can sell it back to us for, but then it comes into our inventory, and then we can resell it, and then also bring in some revenue.
Okay, so I've been under the impression that if a plot holder wants to resell, the right of first refusal to resell goes to the township at current fair market value. So this is actually potentially a money grab for the township? They're not going, it's going to be a 40% of current value?
That's what we, well, currently, with the current bylaw, it is, it's the original purchase price, so we are increasing what the right holder would, would be able to sell it back to us for, trying to strike a balance.
So we could, so a plot holder can only get 40% back of the current value?
That's what we're proposing here.
Okay, and is this something that has had public input?
This, no.
No. Okay, is it something that we would normally go out for public input on?
Mr. Coonan, process?
Yes, through your worship to Councillor Richter, it's a bylaw that's being updated. The bylaw is, most of the matters are housekeeping, therefore it doesn't require or trigger a public hearing.
Okay. Well, I just find it odd, I'm very much object to Section 9.3. I think that that one does need public input, particularly from people who own plots there, because they sign contracts with the township in the past, saying fair market value. Township gets right of first refu, well, township gets the only first refusal, you have to sell back to the township.
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, just a clarification point here, the section originally read a refund equal to the purchase price or less, so as Mr. Rule had highlighted, if the purchase price is, for example, $200, that would be that the township would purchase it for $200. The, now, a refund equal to or greater than the original purchase price, plus the care fund contribution 40% of the current purchase price, so any appreciation would then be accrued to the right holder, and a benefit to the right holder.
So the, the intent here is for these plots to not become investments, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, but I wonder, what exactly does the current contract say? Does it say, resell to the township at fair market value or a current market value?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, are you saying, what does currently Section 9.3 state?
Yeah.
So it's, if we go to page four of the report, Section 9.3, we're replacing the current language, which states, a refund equal to the purchase price less the care fund contribution shall be issued to the relevant right holders. That's the current language. That's getting replaced with a refund equal to the greater of the original purchase price less the care fund contribution, or 40% of the current purchase price, less any required administrative fees.
Okay, so what I'm trying to get a handle on is, why the 40%? Like, where did that come from? Is that industry practice?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, we use the best practice and ensured current alignment with the legislation, have worked with the Inspector of Consumer Protection British Columbia and External Legal Counselors.
All right, and I note in the report as well that it says that the inspector had four minor infractions that they wanted to see adjusted, but it seems to me there's more than four things identified here. So I would like to move that we have a more than four things identified here. So I would like to move that we have a presentation by staff to counsel on this.
Is there a seconder to that? Seconded by Counselor Coonst. You wish to speak to that further, Counselor Richter?
No, I think I've made my points. I just think that the public needs to be aware, and getting a presentation from staff at a council meeting is a good way for the public to be informed before we vote. Thank you.
Right, so you know the discussion. I'll call the question on a referral for a presentation. That is defeated with Counselor Bailey, Counselor Rint, Mayor Woodward, Counselor Van Popta, Counselor Pratt, Counselor Ferguson opposed. Is there any other speakers to G one? Nope, seeing none, call the question on G one. That carries with Counselor Richter opposed. Thank you very much, Mr. Rule. On to bylaws for final adoption, rezoning application number one zero zero five six three, bylaw number five seven five eight, moved by Counselor Rint, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Is there any discussion on the rezoning application file adoption? I one, seeing none, call the question on the rezoning application. That carries unanimously. Development permit application number one zero one zero seven two, moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on the development permit? Seeing none, call the question on I one, development permit. That carries unanimously. Bylaws for final adoption, civic infrastructure phase two, bylaw number five nine nine one, moved, I'll move that, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion? Counselor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship, especially the Eightieth Avenue road winding portion of this. I'm really eager to see advanced, I'm really eager to see this be supported. For those of us who are at the Willoughby Community Open House, and there was a lot of conversation, not just about the open, the community center, but also about Eightieth Avenue, specifically the two oh seven street potential for a crosswalk, making sure that that right in, right out at two oh seven is actually obeyed. But there were some also questions about the the traffic lights that are there up at two oh six and Eightieth, unrelated to the specific capital project, because it is a development application. Thank you to staff for that clarification, but those lights should be on in the next two to three weeks for those people who were interested.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I would like to know, what's the total value of loan authorizations to date that have reached final adoption?
Ms. Ruff, do you have that handy? Can you get back to counsel with that?
I can get back to counsel with that.
That question wouldn't be specific to this bylaw, Counselor Richter?
No, but this is a twenty-nine point nine million dollar bylaw, on top of the other bylaws, and I think we're, we come to these meetings and questions are asked about the total value of loan authorizations, and we can't seem to get a an answer in a meeting. So I would appreciate if we could get a list of all the loan authorizations and the stage that they're in right now.
Any other speakers? Not seeing any. Call the question on I two. That carries, Counselor Richter opposed. Item J one, report number two four nine two. Ms. Bauer, this is back on the floor, even though we have an updated set of potential motions. So we could vote this down and then proceed to the clerks' notes? Is that, that would be the proper process?
That's correct. You can do one of two things. You can vote them down, or you can vote to withdraw the motion that that is already on the floor.
So why don't we, why don't we have to be so dramatic? Why don't we get a motion to withdraw? Moved by Counselor Bailey, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there a debate permitted on withdrawal?
I believe there is, yes.
Does anybody wish to debate withdrawal? So I do have a couple of people wish to debate withdrawal. So are we permitted to with debate withdrawal? We are. Counselor Martins?
Yeah, not so much, it's not a debate. It's just looking for a clarification here on process. So if we go ahead with withdrawing this, are we then, do we have four individual motions then that we will be debating moving forward in this meeting?
I just believe that would be the intent of the clerk's note, to consider the recommendations.
And they'll be done individually, I guess that's my question here.
That would be up to counsel.
That is correct.
So when you say up to counsel, we'll be voting on whether we want to, I I I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to flesh out the the process here. I'm sorry, I'm not wanting to be difficult. How does this look? So are we then now looking at these four and just process the question?
That's correct. We will then consider, presumably if someone wishes to move it, counsel will consider the recommendations.
As four separate motions?
That would be up to counsel.
Thank you. That I, that's a great answer to my question.
Process isn't up to any one member of counsel, the process is up to counsel. Counselor Richter?
Was Counselor Martin's finished?
Yes.
Well, she sounded like she was halfway through a sentence.
Go ahead, Counselor Richter.
Okay, I would like to understand why we need to withdraw this motion.
Ms. Power?
As I understand the clerk's note, there was a clerk's note which provided a updated motion on some new information. So it would be appropriate, as the, this motion was already on the floor, as it was deferred, that you would need to complete this motion first, either by defeating it or withdrawing it, and then be able to move on to the suggested motion that came after.
There was a deferral, which means there's a motion on the floor which has to be disposed of.
So we're withdrawing the deferral, or we're withdrawing both the original motion and the deferral?
The deferral is disposed of. We are withdrawing the original motion.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. The original motion was one that I submitted, and looking through the four subsequent clerk's notes, I'm happy with the content of those. They get at what the original motion was intended to do, so I'm happy to withdraw.
Right, seeing no other discussion, I'll call the question on withdrawal of the original J one. That carries, Counselor Richter opposed. So now, I would like to suggest that someone on counsel, if we number these, one, two, three, and four, that I will move one, two, and three, one, two, and four. Is there a seconder to one, two, and four? Seconded by Counselor Rint. Counselor Pratt, go ahead. So we're debating one, two, and four.
Yeah, I think the the content within one, two, and four get at what the original motion was intending to do, which is start the process of having a conversation around how we're going to get through some of these street parking issues, especially up in Willoughby. It's going to not be an easier, short process, but I think it's at least worth having the conversation. Thank you.
Counselor Martins?
Yeah, I I would like to move division, because I have different thoughts about the different ones, so I don't want to lump them all together.
So I think Ms. Bauer, reading the way the recommendations are formed, that would be challenging, given that we're authorizing a study, and then each individual one is referencing that funding for the study. And the funding amount is based upon two and four, and potentially three. So I'm going to rule that out of order.
So, and can I challenge that?
Good.
Thank you. Because when I'm looking at this, there's actually four distinct directions to staff.
But they refer to the parking study that's approved by one, so if one was not approved, then the other two would fall.
So what I'm seeing here is, the first one is talking about directing staff to do a study. The next one is actually counsel endorsing a concept, going ahead without actually receiving the study. And number three is more of a study, in that we're directing staff to review. And then number four is developing a parking provision program.
No, the chair's ruled that they that they go together and stand and follow along. Counselor Coonst?
Okay, yeah. So I think the second one, it's it's really the wording of that particular sentence, is that we're going to endorse something that we we're actually getting a parking study over. So could we maybe just reword it?
Yeah, you could definitely move some amendments to change, soften the wording, if you wish, for sure.
So so I think that's the problematic piece there, is is just the word that we're going to endorse this. And and maybe if we just took that right out, and that that ...
There's a couple of options. I mean, I think what I read this is we're endorsing the study of the idea. So if you, you know, if you're comfortable with the word endorsing the concept, it could be for that counsel explore.
Yep, explore is probably better than endorse, because I'm not sure that I'm, I want to endorse parking on arterial roadways. There's really, there's a lot to that one, right?
Yeah, so if you wish to move an amendment to change endorse to explore, you could do that.
Okay, I would like to make that amendment.
Okay, I've got other speakers, so I'll come back to you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I don't understand procedurally what we're doing right now. Woodward and Rint moved one, two, and four. Counselor Martin's asked to divide. The mayor ruled that out of order. Counselor Martin's can oppose that and challenge the chair on it. So what happened to the challenge of the chair?
My understanding, the challenge was not made, then that that moment has passed.
Yeah.
Well, that moment has passed, you didn't make that clear, Counselor.
Okay, then I challenge the chair on this.
So you're moving to divide? That's already been heard. So, Ms. Bauer, maybe help me out here. This, you know, it's been ruled, and it's been disposed of. Can you make the same challenge a second time? Make the same motion a second time?
In this case, I believe you can, as it really wasn't disposed of. We moved on from the discussion, but a challenge to the chair immediately is to stop everything. So we, at that point, should have stopped and dealt with that first.
Okay, well, let's do it that way. Counselor Richter, you challenging the chair? Wish to move division?
I thought Counselor Martin's was. I'll second the challenge.
Ms. Bauer, does it really matter at this point?
Not really. If you'd like, either can, either party can.
It's challenged by Counselor Richter, sir. Do we need a seconder for a challenge? I don't believe so. No.
Sir, we don't.
No, we do not. So there's a challenge of the chair made, so we'll call a question on that?
Clarify how to vote on a challenge.
Yeah, so Ms. Bauer, do you want to clarify the vote, please?
The challenge of a chair is to support the, support the mayor or not to. So if you agree with the mayor, it would be yes. If you disagree with the mayor, it would be no.
And I don't vote.
And you don't vote.
That's right. Yeah. So, I gotta label it. Ms. Bauer, could you read out the result, please?
So the mayor is sustained, the chair is sustained, with Counselor Richter, Coonst, and Martin's opposed.
Okay, so can we proceed with business now? Anything else, Counselor Richter? Counselor Martins?
Thank you. So just adding to what Counselor Coonst has already said, my concerns with number two, and it's unfortunate that I now have to say yea or nay for the whole thing. The way this words, there's two questions that I have for staff. Endorse the concept of resident-only parking in the Langley Memorial Hospital area. Is that a defined area in, within our our planning network? Because I'm not sure what that map looks like, what we are contemplating there.
Thank you. Through your worship, staff have not prepared such a map. Staff may recall historical and more recent communications from residents with some of the parking challenges near the hospital. So at this time, we're just looking to get some endorsement or exploration of a study to look at a possible map, a possible potential regional only parking in Muriel. But again, the exact boundaries to be determined.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question, and this point, it's, it says, and, public parking on arterial roadways during non-peak hours. So as an example, Eighty-eighth Avenue and Walnut Grove is an arterial roadway. And this is suggesting that we endorse that there be parking during non-peak hours on the whole stretch of Eighty-eighth Avenue through Walnut Grove, which seems impractical to me, because there's long stretches of fencing. There's one small development that actually faces Eighty-eighth, Discovery, Discovery Town. And other than that, they're all facing away from Eighty-eighth, and there would be nowhere, once people parked their cars, to actually walk to within blocks. So I I feel this is a too generalized, this statement, and it's really setting us up for having some very significant consequences to arterial roadways, that it seems to be across the township. So asking me to endorse that, I have a concern with. If it was specific, if there was perhaps a road or two, we wanted to do a study, I I would be amenable to that, and seeing how that goes, and take the public feedback. But this seems like a very wide sweeping comment, unless staff can help me understand, maybe I'm missing something in this wording.
Through your worship to Counselor, was that a question for staff?
Yep.
What's the question?
I'm asking for clarification on when it's saying, and public parking on arterial roadways during non-peak hours, that's a very sweeping change across our entire township, roadway, roadway network. And I don't know how practical it is in some applications, depending on where the arterial roads are placed.
Wouldn't the study answer those questions?
It's saying that we endorse this concept.
Well, I believe that Counselor Coonst has an amendment coming to soften that.
Well, is it going to soften that it's not all arterial roadways? That's, that's my question.
Well, I believe that's...
And I I'm asking a question to staff.
It's right there in the motion, that's the contemplation. The questions flow through the chair, Counselor Martins.
Okay, through the chair.
It's right, it's right there. No, I can answer your question. It's right there in the motion, that they are considering all arterial roadways, you know, potentially all, but the motion's quite clear, that it's flexible for the study to proceed.
Okay, so I'm not seeing flexibility, and that's my concern. So in Eighty-eighth Avenue and Walnut Grove, we are going to have parking on Eighty-eighth Avenue in non-peak hours for that entire stretch of road, is what this is contemplating. Is that correct?
I believe the, I believe the study is going to consider those options for you to consider at a future date, if adopted by counsel.
I'll wait and see what the softening is, because that's not something I can endorse.
Well, you have a quick solution to that. Counselor Ferguson?
Oh, yes. First of all, I I look forward to, yeah, perhaps an amendment, and Counselor Coonst bringing that forward, because I, that might tidy this up. I did want to ask, well, this is to study something, or to look at, this will be coming, obviously, back one way or another, to, if I may, through the chair, to counsel, once an amendment is made, if the amendments are correct. I'm kind of speaking about the future, and then we can look at it, whether it's working again, or we can always make a decision in the future if you want to change it. Is that not correct, if I may?
Mr. Gray?
Dear worship to Counselor Ferguson, that is correct. It's a concept, it would be a feasibility implications of the parking study will be before counsel. At that time, counsel can consider the direction and provide staff accordingly.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, we can always change all sorts of things in the future if things aren't working. And I do appreciate the comments of my call, because if something's not working, or if there's safety concerns or otherwise, we need to look at, relook at. I I did also want to comment on the, kind of procedurally, the last few minutes. Procedurally, if somebody makes a motion to do A, B, C, or D, that motion doesn't become a challenge to the chair. That motion be moved and seconded, and then we, as a council, decide, not somewhere along the line in between, we're going to discuss a challenge to the chair or something. I was kind of confused by what happened there. So hopefully, in the future, if a motion's made and seconded, we vote on it, and and we proceed accordingly. Not in the middle of it, make it a, do something, a challenge to the chair, which I just don't think that's procedurally correct.
That's correct, Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you.
None of us have a veto. Counselor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I I procedurally, again, I do understand the fact that, yeah, you can't really have two, three, or four without one. So that's partly why I've...
There's no debate on...
Yeah, conducted that way. The the reality, and I I actually really support and appreciate the commentary around potentially softening the language of two, I would even go so far as to say potentially soften the language of four as well, when we get there. So with two specifically, I think there's a couple potential changes. I feel, and potentially staff can clarify for me, that they would achieve the same thing, because if you wanted to keep the word endorse, and change the word, the concept, to say, the study, we endorse the study of X, Y, and Z, or if you changed it to, we'd study the concept of...
We can debate that when we get there.
Yeah, I was just letting Counselor Coonst know, since I know that there's an amendment coming, that regardless of which language, I think it's heading in the right direction.
Let's try and get there. Counselor Van Popta, go ahead.
Through your worship to staff, can you clarify that each of these items is in regards to a certain area? So item two is in regards to the area around Langley Memorial. Item three is in regards to Fort Langley, and item four is in regards to downtown Alder Grove.
Through your worship to Counselor Van Popta, that is correct.
So this, when I read the item two, I see hospital area and public parking on arterial are, on arterial roads, being specific to the hospital area, and not opening up arterial road parking across township of Langley. Is that correct?
Through your worship to Counselor Van Popta, staff's interpretation of it would be specific to that area, so that is correct.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for that clarification. And, you know, again, I'll state here, from the, from this position here, that we hire and and employ very, very capable professionals in their industry, transportation professionals. And I don't think that we would ever be proposed something that would be unsafe or prohibitive to the movement of residents within the township. And I have full trust that in a report, which is what we're seeking, that we'll get that information, which is the whole purpose of exploring these options. And I don't like kind of hogtying staff to wording, that when we're asking for a report with a flavor of exploring different concepts to address residential parking issues in the hospital area, that they can't... that they can't take the liberty of exploring everything that's within their professional opinion needs to be explored. And so I, I have no problem with the wording of this motion, or this, uh, uh, item two of this motion, because I have full faith in our, in our staff, that they're going to look at all items that are feasible, and, and that they'll do it within the, uh, realm of their profession. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Cooner, I'd like to clarify, um, the way I read that, that this was, um, contemplating, studying the potential for, um, parking on arterial roadways in selected areas, not just in the vicinity of the hospitals, maybe we can get staff to clarify that?
Your worship, the overarching parking study is review on-street parking best practices, which is the first one that would cover, um, the, that item. But the specific ones are in relation to specific areas, is my understanding, so that still will be, uh, a part of the overarching review on on-street parking best practices.
Councillor Bailey?
Yeah, sorry, I got lost in the shuffle here. Uh, did councillor Coontz, uh, amendment get, get seconded?
We're, we're, we're going around first-time speakers first, but, um, maybe that's a practice I'll reconsider, once I re-watch this.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just waiting to, are we talking about explore or endorse right now?
We're talking about the motion on the floor, which is endorse, and I'll go back to councillor Coontz, and we can see if that motion for amendment. Councillor Coontz, why don't we just dispose of that, since that's confusing people?
Yeah, sure, um, so I'll, I'll put that out there, um, and this is, this is not that I don't have full confidence in our staff. Um, I, I certainly do, but the devil's in the details, as they say, and I don't think there's one councillor here that's ever made a notice of motion that hasn't been, um, you know, maybe, maybe people uncomfortable with the language, so, um, so I, I think it's just pretty, pretty basic that we just choose the word explore.
You have a motion, councillor Richter? Explore, so you're making a motion to change the word endorse to explore?
Sure.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by councillor Bailey, wish to speak to it some more?
Nope, no, I'm, I'm good.
Councillor Richter?
Uh, yeah, I had a comment, um, back on the comments that councillor Ferguson made, uh, in terms of procedural.
Can we speak to the amendment, councillor Richter?
Yes, we can, but I think that there's, uh, he missed a very important procedural, uh, comment in his comments.
Can we, can we speak to the amendment, councillor Richter, please?
Okay, I would like to address the comments that councillor Ferguson made, when will I have a chance to do that?
Back to the main motion?
Okay, I'll wait till the main motion.
Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, I'm glad the conversations come out around the specifics, because as I interpret the motion, even with the change in language to explore, the exploration of arterial roadway parking would not just be around Langley Memorial, or would it be?
Let's get that clarified, because my understanding is that it was, had had a bit of a wider berth for staff to explore some options.
Dear worship to councillor Pratt, that is correct, there's wider, the first motion itself allows us, uh, the leeway to review on-street parking best practices, that would cover that.
Yes, but I'm speci- speaking specifically to the second paragraph, and potentially, we can get clarification on this, the parking on arterial roadways during non-peak hours and direct staff, that portion. While the Langley Memorial Hospital area is referred to in that paragraph, as I understood it, that specific wording did not just apply to the Langley Memorial Hospital area.
So looking at this again, perhaps there should have been five paragraphs, not, not four.
Okay.
I view them as distinct.
So if we vote on this, and we are exploring the concept.
It's confusing unfortunately, and, um, I think in, in the future, staff will take note that maybe to, to consider when they have an and in there, to maybe break it out as a separate recommendation.
So, I just want that clarified, that we are voting on the potential exploration of arterial roadway parking in other areas besides Langley Memorial Hospital, is that correct?
Mr. Cooner, for the third time, we get that clarified.
That is correct, the first motion allows us to review it on other arterial roads, however, in paragraph two, that was specific to Langley Memorial Hospital.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ferguson, on the amendment?
Oh, yeah, I think, I was thinking of the word study, but explore just, just as good, or, or even better, and councillor Coontz is right, many of us have put notices of motion, we're changing with the last minute, and then sometimes at the table. So I appreciate the, this, these wording in the comments, thank you.
That, I'll call the question on the amendment. That carries unanimously, now back to the main motion as amended, councillor Richter?
Um, yes, councillor Ferguson made a comment that, um, a motion was moved and seconded it and should be disposed of. Councillor Martins asked for it to be divided, which is a fair request. And that request to be divided was ruled out of order by the mayor. The challenge came out of the mayor ruling a request to divide out of order. So there was nothing done that was procedurally incorrect.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad we clarified that from your perspective, yeah, I don't, I don't, I know, councillor Ferguson, go ahead, can we just get to the most?
Since my name was mentioned, I did not mention any other councillor, but since my name was mentioned.
Whatever, we don't need history lessons, it's, it's recorded, we don't need history lessons.
Minutes, I'll have a better understanding what happened, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and it's, it's recorded, I don't know why we need history lessons. Okay, with that, I'll call the question on one, two and four. That carries, councillor Richter opposed, does anybody wish to move number three? I know, who's moving it, it's gotta get on the floor first. So it's moved by councillor Pratt, seconded by councillor Van Popta. So for this one, uh, councillor Van Popta is gonna take over, uh, just for the duration of this one. Ms. Power, just declaring a conflict of interest out of the abundance of caution.
All right, with the motion on the floor. Are there any discussions? Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, the acting mayor right now is councillor Rint. Why are you stepping in for the mayor?
He's declined. Councillor Rint has declined.
You can decline being an, an acting mayor?
I assume so. Ms. Power?
Through your worship to councillor Richter, um, as the chair, uh, councillor Rint, um, would not like to chair the meeting, therefore, the next in line is councillor Van Popta, who is now the chair.
Okay, that's a new one, thank you.
Are there any discussions on item three? Seeing none, call the vote, just by hands, please, because I don't know how to use the buttons. All in favor? Any against? Councillor Richter is against. Somebody call back the mayor? I guess I will.
Okay, mayor and council report, does anybody wish to make a report? Councillor Ferguson?
Yes, I think that, uh, we had the Fort Langley parade, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that we were walking in, and, uh, I wanted to thank the Lions and all the organizers at the parade, because it is my favorite parade, although I do like the Alder Grove Christmas parade and all the other parades, uh, throughout the community, but, uh, it was a great, the weather held off, and it was a wonderful experience, and I, Mr. Mayor, we'll have a metro report later on, when it comes.
Okay, go, any other councils report, councillor Richter?
Uh, yes, I had the opportunity to attend the, uh, first-ever Fraser Valley Economic Summit on Tuesday of last week, very good program. Uh, some excellent speakers, particularly on the, uh, food panel, as well as the, uh, workforce and labor panel. Uh, so, um, and the surprise visit, uh, was a speech, uh, by, uh, the current premier, Mr. Rebe. Thank you.
Any Metro Vancouver Regional Committee report, councillor Ferguson?
Yes, as, as you all know, I keep reminding everyone that, um, my favorite month is now May, because I've been to, uh, the Zero Waste Folk, and we visited the Vancouver landfill, and I understand that they're advertising there's gonna be a picnic, they're coming, I don't have their date, but those people stay in tune or look on their Metro Vancouver site, so they have a picnic, and they have a lot of birds of prey and all sorts of birds down, that's the first. The second thing is we had, uh, Mr. The, uh, not the Paul Henderson that scored the goal in the Canada nineteen seventy-two series, but, uh, Paul Henderson from Metro Vancouver, saying that we're gonna have a, um, an introduction of a new facility in our township for recycling, which is exciting. And the third thing, the most important thing, last week, I had my say, and we visited the Lulu Island Waste Water Treatment Plant. And it, I tell you, it was one of the most important things that we have, the water from our toilets and our sinks and otherwise goes into those important facilities, and it's, and it's disposed of in a proper manner, and the water that comes to the lakes and rivers and then sea, sea ways are always clear coming through. Thank you very much, my favorite time.
Thanks, councillor Ferguson. Uh, any discussion on items N one through three? Councillor Martins?
Thank you, um, I just wanted to acknowledge and end to the Heritage Advisory Committee meeting minutes. Fred Pepin, who is a member of the Heritage Advisory Committee, um, and he's been volunteering in the Langley Heritage Society for over forty years. Um, he received an honorable mention in the Ruby Nob's Distinctive Service Award for twenty twenty-four, and I just want to congratulate Mr. Pepin on that, um, mention, and thank him for his many years of service to our community, it's very much appreciated.
Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I'm not sure if procedurally is okay, but I just wanted to quickly mention M one, the, the renaming, or the naming, at the arboretum of the Les Clay Memorial Garden. Just, just highlighting that as, I think, a great addition to the arboretum, Les, uh, has, has really spent his a long time making that arboretum what it is, and so I'm really pleased that there'll be a feature there to commemorate him and his wife as well nearby, so just a great addition to that fantastic part.
Yeah, I agree. So we'll move on here, items O one, does anybody wish to move that? Moved by councillor Rint, seconded by councillor Coontz. Is there any discussion on O one? Seeing none, call the question on O one. That carries unanimously, does anybody wish to move O two? Moved by councillor Bailey, seconded by councillor Pratt, any discussion on O two? None, call the question on O two. That carries unanimously, is there any other business? Councillor Bailey?
I've had a couple of requests, uh, from the community, uh, the first one is regarding the Alder Grove Starfish back program, backpack program, and its involvement in meat in the street. Uh, it is the second, uh, the second one, uh, and the organizers are asking if we could waive the, uh, four hundred and thirty-four dollar permit rental and bylaw officer fee as this Alder Grove Starfish Backpack Program. Uh, when you look at it in its different ways, uh, is well worth us spending four hundred and thirty-four bucks or, uh, refunding. They've already paid the permits, so if we could refund that to, uh, to them.
Do you wish to move that?
Yes.
Ms. Power, do you have that?
Um, as I believe as a fee, it's, uh, preferable that it was, it was covered by some other means, we can't really waive fees. They still have to be.
Yeah, so I think what councillor Bailey was referring to earlier was funding that from council contingency.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have that, uh, he had, he did have a funding source identified, so do you have that to refund that from council contingency?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have the information, councillor Bailey can provide you the additional information?
Four hundred and fifty dollars, I believe?
Four thirty-four.
Four thirty-four, thank you.
Is there a second or to that? Seconded by councillor Rint, is there any discussion on that? Councillor Bailey, do you have any more on that one?
Yes, uh, second, well, did we vote on that one?
Not yet, we're both two.
Nope, no, yeah, we're good, it's just a, a really cool program, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a, a cool little event that was held right on the corner of Two Seventy-two and, uh, Fraser Highway, I'd like to support it.
So we'll call the question on P one. That carries unanimously. Councillor Bailey, go ahead.
I had a, uh, I've had a request from the Langley Rib Fest, um, they did not qualify this year for forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollar, uh, uh, grant from B C Festivals and Events. Um, and, uh, they're, they're struggling a little bit because of that, uh, they've asked what we can do to give them a ha- a hand, uh, they've said, they're saying, uh, would we be willing to waive the park fees of ten thousand three hundred and thirty cents, I believe it is? And, uh, I'd, I'd like to say, um, I'd like to move that we, out of council contingencies, fund, uh, five thousand dollars towards the, uh, the park fees.
Is there any second or to that? Seconded by councillor Ferguson, go ahead, councillor Bailey?
Yeah, that goes to Rotary, and, uh, and it's a, it is a very high-profile event in the, um, in the township. I think, uh, uh, it's well worth supporting them, uh, get over this bump in the, in the road that they've, uh, they're dealing with, and, uh, uh, you look at how many people, what, I think forty-four thousand people go through there, and, and I've, I've attended it, last year I had the privilege of being a, I, I guest judge, and, and that was even better. Uh, so I, I just want to make sure that we, uh, support the Rotary and support, uh, this incredible event.
Any discussion on that? Councillor Martins?
Yeah, actually, just a, a question, uh, maybe to the mover, um, did we receive some sort of communication on this from the Rib Fest people? Just sort of reflecting what the numbers are and the lack of getting, receiving the grant, which is really unfortunate, did I miss it?
Yeah, they sent, they sent it directly to me, I've got it here.
Oh, okay, yeah, it ju- okay, that's all right, I, I, I'm fully supportive of this, I just wondered if I missed a communication.
They probably sent it to me because of, uh, last year's involvement.
Yeah, when you had the heat, the meat sweats.
Councillor Van Popta?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just a little bit caught off guard with this one, usually when we have, uh, large requests like that, we kind of see it in writing ahead of time. I know that this is a, a big popular event, uh, but this would be probably one of the larger grants that we've done, other than, you know, funding some, uh, Fort Langley, uh, canoe and kayak last meeting, which was for students. Um, I, I need to know, I, ooh, I hate being put on the spot like this, because I know it's a great event and a big event, but I don't know anything about where those funds go, uh, off the top of my head.
I believe this is, given that they didn't receive significant grant funding from senior levels of government this year for an unknown amount, we've seen other groups have this problem.
Okay.
Where they're relying on multi-year grant funding, and then it's pulled with no explanation and no notice, so this is a partially, councillor Bailey's moved a partial refund of the field rental at McLeod.
Okay.
So this is reducing their field rental costs by somewhat.
Okay, so we're not, okay, our.
So it's not a grant per se, it's a reduction through council contingency funding to partially offset their field rental cost.
All right, I understand that, thank you.
Councillor Richter?
Um, I had a, another business item, which is why I had it on, but on this particular topic, um, I think the appropriate thing would be for us to defer this, and councillor Bailey could circulate the letter to all of council to see, we could bring it back next week, or next meeting for a vote.
Are you moving deferral?
Yeah, I'll move deferral.
There's a second or to deferral? Not seeing a second or. So that, I'll call the question on P two. That carries unanimously, so councillor Bailey, do you have any other writings? That's it, councillor Richter?
Um, yes, I wanted to come back to this question of acting mayor, and, um, the declining to be acting mayor is something that I haven't come across before, and I'm just wondering what the protocol is for handling it. So, for example, when any member of council is an acting mayor, they are paid an additional stipend in order to do that job. Uh, they are, uh, paid, um, to step in for the mayor when the mayor is not available to be there, as well as to chair, uh, um, council priority committee meetings, um, as well as to step in at meetings when the mayor has to declare conflict. So I'm just wondering, in this particular case, how is the declining to be acting mayor being handled? Um, has an additional stipend been paid to the councillor who is choosing to decline to be acting mayor? And if it has been, is an additional stipend being paid to the councillor who stepped in for, uh, the person? And that means that this councillor who stepped in today, uh, are they getting two six-month terms or a full year, in other words, of acting mayor duties?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, a clarification point here, um, councillor Rint did not decline to be acting mayor. Uh, councillor Rint, uh, was declining to chair the meeting with respect to one specific item, which was, uh, J one, um, in relation to Fort Langley. Councillor Rint is currently still the acting mayor.
Okay, so I, I guess I was caught off guard by that, declining to be the acting mayor.
I think councillor Coon, I think, um, Mr. Cooner has clarified that that's an incorrect characterization, he's clarified it for you. He has not refused to be acting mayor. He has not refused to be acting mayor.
Okay, well, the phrase declining to be acting mayor was actually used in the meeting, so that's why I used it here. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Rint?
I'm looking, a question for staff on the West Creek report. When would we be seeing that?
I believe that's in regards to the referral. Let me send, let's throw it back to staff. Yeah, Counsel Rint asked me, and I didn't have an answer, when we would expect to see that returned to council.
Dear Worship to Counsel Rint, just for clarification, the West Creek report, is that in relation to a resolution or was it a referral?
Well, it's a good thing we're asking. Uh, I think it's, maybe, how do we clarify that it's in regards to the processing application, rezoning application on 88th Avenue for processing that was referred back to staff to work with the proponent on clarifying potential definitions and scope?
Dear Worship to Counsel Rint, we can advise Mayor and Council of that, which staff is just going to, um, consult with the department.
Okay, so you'll, you'll get counsel and update via email?
That is correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Counsel Coonst?
Yeah, um, this is in reference to the delegation that we received last week about, or last, uh, meeting about the, the dog park in Willoughby. And I received some communication, um, from people that, um, you know, they don't like to complain, um, and they really said that was just a few people. And I know we received some correspondence, uh, regarding this. So I was wondering if there was, uh, something that we as a council were going to be doing about this issue. Um, and it, it just sounds like it's possibly a few people and a few dogs that are really, um, the problem. Through your worship to whoever you want to direct that to.
I'm not sure what I'm directing with.
Oh, you know, the, the delegation that we received last week about the dog park, and you, you sent us, um, videos of the noise?
Yeah, he was emailing me directly, so I was forwarding them to all of council to ensure that you all had what he was emailing me. Um, but I'm not sure what follow-up you're requesting.
Okay, well, so I'm, I'm, what I'm just asking if, if we are going to be doing anything about that issue, because I also received, um, uh, some emails and messages from people that live in Willoughby that were basically confirming this situation. So are we as, as a council going to address that?
I believe, Mr. Cooner, you would await council direction, and currently there is none.
That is correct, yeah, your worship. There is no direction for staff to implement.
So that would be up to council. Counsel Coonst?
Okay.
Is there any other business?
Yes, yes.
Counsel Richter, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to refer the, um, items distributed concerning the, uh, Yorcson Creek Dog Park from, uh, Mr. Yaworski. Uh, that's in, uh, the May 27th, item number nine. And then there are two letters on May 16th, item number two and three, also on the Yorcson Creek Dog Park, uh, to staff for a report.
What kind of report are you looking for?
Well, it seems to me that some suggestions have been made, particularly in the May 16th letters, about an alternative approach to just shutting the whole dog park right down.
So you, you would like to see a staff report to shut the dog park down?
No, I'm referring the delegation that we had from Mr. Yaworski, as well as the subsequent items that came in items distributed to council on May 16th and on May 27th, to staff, uh, for recommendations, I guess.
Recommendations in what regard?
Okay, we have under the procedure bylaw the right to refer a delegation to staff for a report. That's what I'm doing. I'm following the delegation.
All right, is there, is there a seconder to this, this report? Counselor Coonst to second that? Is there any discussion on this report? Counsel Coonst?
Yeah, I think it's just to respond to the, the people that live in that area that, you know, are concerned about the noise. And I think that there could possibly be a pretty simple, uh, solution to that, so, um, maybe staff have some recommendations.
Okay, Counsel Martins?
Thank you. Um, I don't know if this requires an amendment of the motion. I think it would be helpful for us to know, I know that there was comments made by the delegation about, um, approved by law enforcement. And I'm wondering what bylaws exist, um, to deal with the noise of barking dogs in, um, a public dog park. So that's a question I've had, um, and I don't know if that can maybe be captured in the report. That would be helpful.
Mr. Cooner, you're going to stop dogs from barking?
Dear Worship to Counsel Martins, uh, bylaw department will be relying on the community standards bylaw. Within the community standard bylaws, there's certain definition in relation to nuisances that may be covered by dog barking. The intent is to have dog parks operate during dawn and dusk, uh, or dawn to dusk. Or I may be getting that to confuse myself, but, uh, the intent is to specify a certain area, um, and ensure the community, uh, standard bylaws are met. And there's certain timeframes that we would like those dog parks to operate in and ensure compliance with that.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, if I can through the chair, is the, the reference to bylaw is with regards to the hours of operation? Because there is also, um, as strange as it may sound, I know that barking dogs are, that, that does go through bylaw complaints as well, um, within my neighborhood. I'm aware of that, so, um, but that wouldn't apply in this case, is what you're saying.
Dear Worship to Counsel Martins, it may apply in the event that the dogs are, uh, attending the park is subsequent to when it's actually supposed to be closed, and there is a nuisance in relation to noises, which is barking.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, I just, as item number, actually, one, on, uh, May 13th, regarding the Arborist report on trees.
Counsel Ferguson, we'll have to dispose of the referral motion first, and then we can come back to that.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion on the referral? Seeing none, call the question on, I think we're up to P3. And that's defeated with Counsel Bailey, Counsel Rint, Mayor Woodward, Counsel Van Popta, Counsel Ferguson opposed. Uh, so Counsel Coonst, did you have anything else?
No.
Nope. Counsel Ferguson, we'll go back to you.
Yeah, I just, again, I, I was, uh, reading through the items distributed on May 13th, item one. It's, again, there's Arborist report, um, if I may through chair of staff. Is this a new Arborist report, or is this the same Arborist? And, um, while I'm asking the question, is the Arborist asking for something to be done regarding these, this, these tree, tree permits, if I may?
Dear Worship to Counsel Ferguson, uh, could you kindly just specify the exact correspondent you're referring to? It, is that on the items distributed to council list, May 27th?
No, May the 13th, 2024.
And could you just provide us a subject?
It's the Mike Fadham and Associates Vegetation Consultant, item number one, May 13th, 2024, distribution to council.
And if you can just kindly assist me, that's in relation to the, uh, tree cutting?
Tree cutting, it's, it's, the name of it's called a permit fees waived for removal of six trees, but this report, um, seems like it's a relatively new report.
My understanding off the top of my head here, bear with me, is that there was a report produced by the Arborist subsequent to the trees being, um, cut and trying to justify that, uh, those, the quality, I believe, of the trees. Um, and that was presented during the delegation. I believe it was provided to Mayor and Council. So that then made its way to the distribution list as well.
Okay, the, okay, the only reason why I bring it to our attention today is the fact that there was another one done, done earlier on by Klima Associates that may or may not have been adequate, because I know that these, uh, other people, uh, are well-respected in the field. I don't know if the other ones are, but there's, seems to be two Arborist reports. That's all I can say. But, you know, perhaps maybe you can get back to me or something, because I was just wondering, is there, if I may through chair, is there a opportunity to reduce fees if a tree is dead or dangerous?
Dear Worship to Counsel Ferguson, in this particular matter, staff will review both those Arborist reports and see if there's any items that need to be considered or relooked at. Uh, in, in relation to, uh, an individual cutting trees without a permit, there is, uh, within the bylaw, a reconsideration that the individual can seek from council. However, there's 30 days to seek the reconsideration from the data of the decision. So we'd have to see whether they're well within their rights.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business? No, seeing none. Is there any other items for special close?
Well, I have a special.
Yeah?
Mine would be, um, I don't know, I, I don't know what item would be under, uh, I'll say A1 consideration.
Not, not, are you adding an item, Counsel?
Adding an item.
You're adding an item, a consideration item?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other additions to special close? So I'll move it with that addition with the removal of item E2. Is there a seconder to that? Seconded by Counsel Rint. So we're going to call the question on Q1, moved as amended. That carries unanimously. Got a motion to terminate? Moved by Counsel Rint, seconded by Counsel Van Popta. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Thank you.